Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Six o'clock, September 16th, 2025, a regular meeting of the Planning Commission.
All members present?
I'm not gonna give the opening statement by chair. Just, oh, I've got to turn off the volume, sorry. Because you guys have all heard it and no one else needs to hear it here. Uh, consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda? You know what?
Hello?
I just, during the other business, I just want to update people about the food truck ordinance, the short-term rental stuff, but I don't need to add that to the agenda. Oh, and also the neighborhood development area, so I can remember those three things. Okay, approval of minutes for June 24th and August 19th? This was brought up last month that we had never approved the minutes for June 24th. I only had one thing, Leisha, number 43.
I'll make the motion first.
Oh, sorry.
No, sorry, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for June 24th.
Okay. Now do I have a second to that motion? Second. Judy has a second, now we can have a discussion. I just had one thing on number 43, it just said come up goals, if you can say the word with. It's kind of petty, but I know it goes online, it's the record of the meeting, so.
Okay, got it.
Does anybody have anything else? Okay, um, I'll call the question to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Okay, and now we'll take a look at the minutes for August, last month.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for August 19th.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. The only thing I had was, oh, does anybody else want to jump in? Roman numeral nine, number five. I don't know, if you could check the video, I don't remember saying that they, the trustees agreed to change the speed limit because they didn't, um, but maybe I said that in error and it.
Roman numer, oh, number five.
Number five in section, Roman numeral nine, yeah, Roman, roman numeral nine, section, number five. The only thing I wanted to say is I didn't say that they agreed to change the speed, they agreed to have a, um, you know, have them come do the traffic study after the construction's done, hopefully before the winter, and you had all that part accurate.
So what are we gonna do, just check that?
Just maybe cross it out, unless Leisha wants to watch the video first to see if I did say that.
Not going.
If I did, I shouldn't have. Because it's not true.
Omit it.
Omit it, please, yeah. Okay, I'll call the question to accept the minutes of August with the one correction, Roman numeral nine, number five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention, okay. Comments from citizens?
Would now be okay to comment on number nine on the agenda?
Sure.
So, my name is Jared Jowdy, I think work in the Ludlow zoning, planning and zoning office, and it had come to light that some buildings along Main Street may be changing hands or developing, or, um, but some don't have any parking spaces associated with them whatsoever, yet they have mixed use of commercial and residential. One in particular has the availability to renovate an empty space into a residential, and I've been asked about parking, and going through some of the older paperwork, there was a variance on this building to allow for development without parking. So that brought up a thought in my mind that if we are focusing on neighborhood development areas and increasing density, allowing buildings to be developed more than two or three stories, even up to four stories, with just the approval from the fire marshal, there seems to be a disconnect with the parking involved, because some of these places are eligible to do so, to add stories and more residential apartments and things, but because of the parking situation, it leaves those potential developers unable, unable to move forward. And I wasn't sure if there was a way that any new regulations could be adopted that would allow for not just something within a thousand feet to rent from a tenant, but somehow using town parking as part of the criteria for development.
Can you park overnight in that lot over at the old IJ building, the liquor store?
Uh, I'm not sure, I believe you can.
You can?
Yeah.
But it depends, I guess, where you live, because you're gonna carry groceries from there.
Yeah, and I would second this from Jared, like, I think the parking thing is, is, can be limiting, and especially for those developers who want to do that, we, we kind of came into that with, with the building next door here, hey, prime residential, we all want residential, and then you get hung up on the parking and, you know, the unknown for a developer, someone putting in the money, um, that can be daunting. Um, I think back when I was in Burlington, we rented an apartment for four of us, we got two parking spots, um, you figured out where you put the rest of them, not that that isn't a challenge, um, but, um.
You get towed in the winter in Burlington.
Yeah, and like, hey, you, you gotta pay attention, you gotta do it, um, I believe, and I've had conversations with, um, with Brendan and the PD for, for that municipal lot, and during snowstorms, during, um, you know, uh, just nighttime parking there, it is allowed there, and maybe it's something that could be, um, you know, a residential parking permit, you know, towns have those of, you know, no onsite, um, on-street parking unless you're a resident, or things like that, um, that could be, that could be approached.
Yeah, I think that's, it sounds like it's necessary, I'll just take a look at it.
I think, you know, the reality is if the town of Ludlow wants to, you know, better this situation, then you have to buy property, right? So even the municipal lot that we're talking about is a lease, so.
It's one you rent.
You know, so let's, you know, we can always attempt to purchase that property. Ellison property, I don't know how much you can do with that, that's been for sale for a long time, but that seems to be prime for, for parking, so, but, you know.
Is the rumor that that's an starved building that can't be torn down, is that true?
I don't know, so that, I don't, but I also know it's been for sale for a long time, and it has, no one's bought it.
No, they're, they're all simply old buildings in the historic district part of town, if they're, they're not on the historic registry, then there's no protections for them, so it's just simply an old building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a great spot for parking.
It'd be a great spot for parking garage.
Yeah, ideally, you know, but.
I think there's something about the floodway, I thought we looked into the parking garage idea, that it couldn't.
I don't, I don't know if we ever got past really us.
That would be permissible, um, because you're actually reducing the amount of impervious surface there.
Right.
With a parking garage, yeah, that's a great place for one of those, for sure.
And Jared, just, he does bring up a good point about this, you know, this main drag that we have of Main Street where, um, current, current zoning wouldn't allow a vast majority of these buildings to exist, um, you know, when you look at, uh, um, you know, distance between your, your next building and, you know, your setbacks and stuff, like, none of it actually is conforming, but, but we do like it, um, and we do, are supportive of it, and maybe it's something that does warrant, um, something of a, hey, a, you know, a Main Street from bridge to bridge, um, zoning change where, hey, we can, um, you know, these are the things we want, we want the density, we want that, we don't want it necessarily up on Depot or on Pleasant Street, but, but it does make sense for Main Street, um, and maybe that's something that, hey, we, we capture some of the parking stuff, we capture some of those, um, those issues that are Main Street focused, where, hey, you want to do on Pleasant Street, that's, you know, maybe that's a little different, but allows some of this stuff to happen in the areas that we do want, um, and that's obviously a big can of worms, but.
Jumping ahead to number nine, and we do have Logan here, and he has maps for us, and.
We do have maps.
And we can hopefully find some workable solutions to that problem, thanks Jared for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other comments from citizens? Mr. Alden, would you like to weigh in today?
Yeah, thank you, uh, my apologies for not being there in person, um, just quickly, it sounds like we're gonna talk about it afterwards, but just to clarify, there, there is no overnight parking allowed at the Brew Fest unless it's a really special circumstance that, that Brendan has worked out with them, and that property is currently for sale, as folks know, so the potential to lose that municipal lot is, is very high, but we'll talk about more of that when you get to that on, on the agenda, thank you.
Any other comments from citizens? Okay, moving on. Um, establishing a housing commission and how to plan a design charrette with, today we have with us Jill Appel from West Windsor, thanks for joining us.
Sure, thanks for the invite.
Next month, we're gonna have Chuck Weiss from Springfield, and hopefully Al from West Windsor, um, apologies that I didn't put last names in here, Leisha brought that to my attention, but I had already posted it, so I'm sure, sorry I didn't fix that. Next time, they will definitely have last names in there, um, Jill, can we take it away to you?
Um, sure, I'm kind of flying a little bit without a ton of information.
That's okay, we just want to pick your brain for what you know about housing commissions.
Right, so the, and, um, I think when you invited me, you mentioned that you actually, you saw our presentation from February 1st, right? So you understand that we did a home study, an affordable home study, because we're a small community, fourteen, fifteen hundred people, eight hundred and fifty homes, we have a similar profile in terms of, we're not quite as high as you, but almost half of our homes are second homeowners, and, um, so we have a lot of seasonal, we do have our own little mountain, it's bankrupt, but the town owns it now, which is wonderful, and we, you know, we've made a lot of great changes on Ascotney, um, and the rationale, you know, how we got started with this, and, um, I'm not, I'm gonna be very direct into the point, I'm not gonna be long with it, but, um, you know, there was ARPA money available to the planning commission, and we had recent, we'd gotten our housing snapshots from the regional commission, and we were impassioned by the concept of being able to, um, and, you know, for a plethora of reasons, right? Half of our town is empty, um, a lot of the time, um, we have a decline in school population, um, and it's likely that we may need to repurpose that building down the road, um, so, so we started our project with a community forum, because we didn't have any locations, right? We didn't know, and the town owns one four-acre parcel that is actually a potential, um, so, in contrast to Chester, who had an eighty-eight acre parcel, and they wanted to take a look at what they could do with that parcel, so we started our project with a community forum, and, um, with, with a goal to reach out to the community, identify locations, um, you know, mostly around the village, um, on infrastructure, water, mostly sewer infrastructure, um, and we were looking for donations to donated land and things like that, so, um, so at our community forum, we had four individuals come forward to identify locations.
Wow.
Yes, we have one, we have one woman who's donating six acres to the town, it happens not to be near the village, but it's still a great site, um, and, you know, we haven't, we identified twenty-one sites to begin with, so we looked at the map of our town, and you really get to understand, and you talk to your zoning administrator, and they know who owns what, and what's going on, and when will that become available, and how, what, you know, is that a nice person, or is that a person who's gonna be resistant? Um, but, you know, you can't make anybody part of anything, um, and the town didn't have any money, um, and we still have almost no money.
Sounds like us.
On the housing end.
The many things.
But, um, but at least I think you have a local option tax.
Yeah, we just, we just started in July.
Yeah, um, which is, it seems a little bit, um, that may be a next step for us, we started on July 1st registering short-term rentals, and we pulled in twenty thousand from short-term rentals, and we have, um, and there's a big break in our ordinance for hosted, you know, short-term rentals, I don't invite people in town versus unhosted, um, there's a big bump in the registration fee, so, so we did start on short-term rentals. Part of the goal, and I'm gonna invite you, um, if you can make it, on Saturday morning, September 27th, we have our second community forum, where we're reporting out on the results of this study. Uh, so we've chosen four sites, we have had several conversations with Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust, Elizabeth Bridgewater, and Peter Padgy, and they are interested in one of the locations, so we're kind of trying to work with them to get that going, um, we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully process the transaction for the donated land within the next few months, because if you don't have site control, you don't have housing, um, you know, you don't have a project. We have not formed a housing commission, I don't know, um, whether we're given that, um, but we ran this project, Al Heuler and I have basically run this project from the planning commission, and.
That's impressive.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a lot of our time, um, and it's been really good, um, and we've worked really great, um, Al and I actually both worked for the same company four years ago, and I ran into him at West Windsor, and he's like, well, how about you join the planning commission, and here we are, um, so, so we, so part of what we discussed last night at our planning commission meeting, when we went, went through the presentation, is forming a housing reserve fund, Chester's a little bit ahead, I go see Preston all the time, or maybe not all the time, but I've seen him several times, um, so, he's given me, um, a copy of, you know, their, I think they, it's on the town, town warrant, they approved that this spring, a town, a housing reserve fund and an allocation of funding in the budget, um, which I think is tied a hundred percent to the short-term rentals, but it was, I think, about twenty-four thousand, um, so that information is, I got from him, and he also provided the description of their housing commission, which is really good, what, what you get from a planning commission is, is heavy focus on zoning and, 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 I mean, we, we don't spend a lot of time on parking investments, because we got plenty of parking, not a lot, we're small, um, and, um, but you, but zoning and planning commissions, you know, will be moving into the town planning process, and if, I think it's our opinion at this point in time, is if, uh, if a community is interested in housing, they should be forming a commission, and, um, and then as part of staffing out the commission, I really like what Chester wrote for their commission, they really look for a multidisciplinary group of people, they, they, they may have seven or nine, seven or nine people, um, you know, architects, and engineers, and, um, planners, and developers, you know, we have a couple of great contractors in town, I, I'd love to have them on the commission, so we have not, but we are very close to forming a housing commission, so, so, and with respect to the charrette, um, I received all of the reports, when, when we went out, so we kind of made this up, right? We kind of said, well, we don't know much about affordable housing, so we'll, we'll design this study, and, and we focused on identifying sites, qualifying sites, choosing high priority, our high priority sites, mostly to meet the goal, the numbers goal that was in the, um, the housing snapshot, I don't know what your goal is, what's your goal?
We got, we got out that information last month, does anybody remember our goal? It's pretty high.
Yeah, it must be, what's your population?
It's a four thousand?
Seventeen hundred?
Yeah, seventeen.
Well, seventeen, I can.
It's seventeen hundred?
Year round.
Yeah, I mean, year round residents.
Wow.
Except we have a lot of.
That balloons to thirty, that balloons to thirty thousand.
Yeah, I've seen seventeen hundred, wow, I didn't know it was that high, I mean, I didn't know it was that low.
I didn't know it was that low, I would have thought it was high, Chester has three thousand.
Yeah, it drops pretty regularly, it's a pretty steady decline over the last, like, fifteen years.
Is that right?
It did increase a bit during COVID, but then they all moved back.
Yeah.
A lot of people came and stayed in their vacation homes.
Okay, okay, so, um, so relative to, um, a charrette, when we, when we went out, in order to get ARPA funding, you have to put an, you know, of course, it's, it's town procurement, right? So you have to craft an RFP and send it out, we actually had four proposals last fall, um, one of them was from SE Group, who worked with Chester, and one of the things we were trying to get away from as a community, um, would appeal to us, so we chose Banwell Architects and DeWolf Engineering, and they had actually a finance guy, because we really wanted to focus on practical stuff, and when you, when you engage research folks, they pulled together a lot of great information, but it's kind of like, okay, but we just want to, we want to build affordable homes, so.
How would you do that with twenty-four thousand, you just wanted for that fund to increase and.
So, so the contract we signed with Banwell, so this is really great, Banwell Architects is out of Lebanon, New Hampshire, um, DeWolf Engineering is out of Montpelier, and if there's one person you really want, it's an engineering consultant, I mean, if, if you're going after locations, you really want to have somebody, and our engineer has never been to West Windsor, but there are so many, so I'm gonna actually, he had COVID, uh, on the date of our first community forum, so he didn't, he didn't make it, but he's coming on the 27th, and we'll finally meet him, but there are so many tools available, um, environmental and, you know, topography and, and stormwater, you know, all this stuff, so that he could look at all of our sites and access what was available from the state on each of those sites, and, um, so, so we like the practical nature of that group, and we worked really well with the engineer, sometimes with, um, you don't get to architects until you're done with the engineer, you have to have a location before you can start talking buildings.
So that's where the twenty-four thousand goes, to the engineer?
So, the contract we signed with them was for, I'm gonna use round numbers, forty-three thousand, we got twenty-nine thousand in ARPA funding, you know, it was always down to the wire, and there's always like, it was actually the fire department that came in, and, and so what we need, so, but anyway, so we got twenty-nine thousand, and we knew that there was a round of municipal planning grants coming up in the spring, so our strategy was either we'll do everything we can with the twenty-nine thousand and then stop, or, uh, if we don't get MPG funding, but we did apply for a municipal planning grant, and we got another thirty thousand, um, so, so we're able to finish that project, and, um, September 27th is the end date for our home study, and we're doing a review of the process, four locations, um, the four sites, the four build sites, we did look at renovations, there are, we have, you know, there are VIT monies available for renovations, um, I think the hardest thing, and so we'll be presenting all of this on the 27th.
What time is that?
It is ten AM tonight.
Yeah.
Right at our town hall upstairs.
Okay.
So, just to jump in quick, so, I think, you know, what Jill's saying, and, you know, say it a little bit differently, is that the town has skin in the game, right? So they're putting this money towards soft costs, so engineering, site plan development, perk tests, you know, getting infrastructure set up, drainage set up, right? All the stuff that a developer is not gonna come in and do without any, like, assurances or any allies, so a great example is actually Dorset in Vermont right now, they have a municipally owned property, they just built a new town hall on it, and they have a ton of lots going up, they have, I think, close to like forty lots, and they've done all the site work, they've done, they put the road in, the municipality did, so they've, they've taken on all those soft costs, they have skin in the game, and now, and the developer's gonna come in and say, well, the municipality of Dorset is gonna, is gonna usher me through the finish line with this, right? The town's not all of a sudden gonna say, ah, it's your, it's your project now, like, we don't want anything to do with it, so with all the development challenges that you have in this state, the only way to get meaningful development, especially affordable housing, is to really be, really invite, and the municipality has to initiate this, this development, it's not just gonna happen, right? So Dorset is a great sample, I, I, I'm gonna be really excited to see what they do in the coming years, so the town hall was the first, was kind of phase one, the infrastructure, all the soft costs, were, were all in that phase, and they've got a developer that's basically wants to set a precedent in this state, is likely gonna, is not, not gonna make a lot, ton of money, they're gonna come in and they're gonna work with the municipality, and they're, they're not in it, they're in it to set a precedent in the state of Vermont, like, look what can happen based on this model.
Where did they get their money from?
Fund, fundraising.
From fundraising?
Yeah.
The town did the fundraising?
A good majority of it, yeah, so, you know, you really, you create these commissions, you know, you have an, you have an idea, you have a plan, you go and fundraise, you know, can be, um, you know, we, we talk all the time about what those potential for revenue streams, you know, so all, you know, all this can be done, you know, but we aren't gonna get any meaningful development if the municipality doesn't take the first step, or partner with other municipalities that aren't taking these steps, because, you know, do we need housing in Ludlow? Absolutely, but does it make a lot more sense in Chester, where they have eighty acres, and then now we find a way to get those people that live there here when they need to, for work, for enjoyment, right? So we need to look, I think, bigger than our local community, and look at our surrounding communities, as we're all one community, and how do we all work together to get, to accomplish these goals? Everybody's working in a vacuum right now, and it's not possible, we need, we need help from, you know, all communities, which is why I'm glad, you know, to have you, Jill, so, yes.
Yeah, this is very informative.
Yeah, um, yeah, and it's, um, we got a lot of great communities, and, and the rub is the money, the rub is the money, um, one of the things that Preston told me, he doesn't even have to visit, because you can just call me Preston, but one of the things Preston told me is they just initiated fundraising for their housing reserve fund, and these are tax deductible contributions.
Yep.
So, you know, we, I mean, and we all have to be in the, we're, there are people in our communities who would, who would donate, that, I mean, I'm sure there are people in Ludlow who would donate as well, um, so what happened also is we were, we were trying, we were supposed to get a sense for the financing of projects, and, um, we're, you know, we, the guy who was the consultant, um, with the architects and the engineers actually got sick and, and was, you know, didn't participate in the project, I think the most complicated process is figuring out the financing, I think the housing trust, um, Wyndham Windsor is very interested, we have one, um, where the existing pool of fitness center is on the mountain, on Ascotney, Orange Lake, which is the owner of the hotel there, um, and the time shares, wants to move the pool, the pool and fitness center is in Isor, they just put a big fence around it, actually, um, which is way prettier, and, um, so they want to move it over a couple of lots and rebuild it, and so when that existing pool and fitness center are demolished, we're looking at a twenty-five unit apartment building, um, and we have to kind of, you know, the town has to get in there and kind of nudge Orange Lake, and it may mean that, you know, we raise money to support the demolition, it may mean that we pay for the demolition, it may, we may ask them to donate the two acres, you know, but these are the kinds of things that we were starting, we actually met with the housing trust on Monday, um, what is today, Tuesday, it's been a bit ago, right? Oh my gosh, so we met with them yesterday and talked about strategies to try to move them along in terms of demolishing the existing pool and fitness center, so it's very, for us, it's very site specific, but I do, um, I do think a housing commission says, we're serious, and a housing fund says, we're gonna start raising money, and you have, and your short-term rentals, all of it should go in there, and maybe some of your. And maybe some of your local option tax. So I don't, but I, but I do think the town has to be involved in it. Our first community forum, there was strong support. I mean, we had about 100 people and the community was behind it. So, um, and we're hoping that, you know, we'll get the same kind of support in September 27th. You know, everybody gets nervous about density and who are you bringing in and things like that. But we decided, as part of this forum, I mean, we want to hear comments and questions. But I, when I got the report, I got a copy of the report by SE Group. And it didn't make sense for us to do a charrette. I, I have to say, we really, you know, you've got to trust that every site, like, we know we have a mountain. We know we have mountain style buildings. We know we have townhouses and condos, right? So we all have that. So we're all kind of used to seeing that. Chester is not used to seeing that. They don't necessarily like that. But the notion of asking your community right now about what house styles they like, I don't, we didn't feel it was relevant. And.
I didn't know that was part of it. I didn't know that was part of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I think.
That would be the design.
Yeah. So it was, a lot of it is, it's a lot of stuff you already know. So it's, it's stuff you already know.
Well, that's very nice.
Mark told you, you know, here's, we have a shortage and, and so.
So in the Dorset example, so they, they have so many lots that they're actually going to, they're looking at doing mixed types. So having, um, you know, 55 and older or assisted living in a certain section, having affordable housing in another section, and then having middle class housing. So 400 to 475, you know, in another, in another area. So really having, you know, have, I mean, it's, it's really like the utopian sample.
It really is.
You know, but it's something where.
We get so many.
Take pieces of that. So their town manager, Rob, he's the one that's really spearheaded this. You know, and it's been, and it was a lot of legwork. But, you know, it was, you know, creating, you know, getting that local input. But then also, you know, really doing heavy fundraising and really bringing the, bringing the community together around that common goal. Um, you know, it didn't, it wasn't without its.
Right. Do you know what that fundraising looked like? Like, what did they actually do to raise the funds?
I don't know, but I know that their new town hall is state of the art. So I mean, you can heat it with a candle. It's, it's, it's zero emission. I mean, it's, it's geothermal. It is completely net zero. So it's all, it's all solar, everything. Yeah. And it has a vault. It's a, it's a forever town hall. So like the vault has redundancy storage systems, like that they could record for centuries. Like, you know what I mean? So.
I think I've seen the plan for this development. Isn't it, is it about 100 acres? Is it connected trails?
Yeah, it's all big trail system up and back.
We're very enamored with pocket neighborhoods. So it's a series of pocket neighborhoods that are connected. I've seen this.
Yep.
And the person I talked to said, it's a very nice town. But they wouldn't tell me where it was.
It is very nice. No, it is, but I mean, it's.
I, I like that mixed economic thing too. Because I'm on a, I'm on a committee with the regional planning with Walter from Springfield. And he talks about the missing middle in Springfield. And I taught there for 40 years and I know about the missing middle in Springfield. And it just is really hard on the education system not to have a mix.
And that's better for everybody. And we actually came out in our forum right off the bat and say, and we define affordable. And we say, these are our ranges. This is missing middle for household income. And then we, you know, we have one slide that kind of talks about missing middle. And the reality is with the cost of development these days, there have to be units that are sold at market rate. They're all going to be mixed income. It's when you can let a housing trust take on an apartment building and they have access to all of their funding to support affordable, that's when they can get to 100% affordable, you know, at different levels of the average median income. But if you, you're engaging a developer for a piece of property and you're putting in 20, 20 units of whatever condos, duplexes, or a single family, you, you know, I get the sense, we haven't done the financing stats. You know, we're not even there on these other sites. And one of them's on the market and we're hoping the guy doesn't sell it. But, um, but you have to be in mixed income. You can't make the numbers work unless you're selling something at market rate.
Yeah. Gosh, you've been so informative. Does our board have, do they have a question for Jill? I got lots of questions for you.
Advice on kind of how to handle the financials? Like, did you have to set up a, um, tax account or does that go through the town?
Good question.
Tax exempt.
Oh, tax exempt for donations?
Yeah.
I, no, but I'm just, we, we, the planning commission in West Windsor is probably going to approve a recommendation for a housing fund. It'll probably be go to town meeting. We won't want a special town meeting for that. But it'll go to town meeting in March. But it is clearly tax deductible. And, you know, I think we can all ask Chester, but it clearly is tax deductible. And they're probably a good resource, or Dorset. I mean, it'd be great to talk with the Dorset folks about how they're fundraising. You know, but it is, you know, it's, you have to create the case, right? And you have to hit the emotions and, you know, and, and you have to find the right people who care about it.
It would be interesting to know from you how you advertise that, exactly. I mean, how you, you know, how you got that 100 people, the contract, community forum. I really want to know that.
We wanted to do a townwide mailing, but we got shut down. And, um, but we had a couple of articles in the Vermont Standard. We have Front Porch Forum. We have, we actually now have the West Windsor Weekly, uh, which I didn't know about. We have a big poster, um, in front of the town hall. And we didn't even hang things around town.
Digital marquee sign would be nice.
Agree. What's that?
Digital marquee sign would be really nice, you know?
Absolutely. If you could get it, yeah.
That's a sore subject. You, I don't care.
Wait, what was the first thing you did over months? The standard?
Yeah, the Vermont Standard.
We have the Mount Holly chit chat too, so.
Yeah. So I, we didn't, we didn't spend a lot of money on putting the word out. But, but we did get, I mean, we would have liked to have.
What was, what day and time did you pick?
Well, this is tricky for our first one. We picked February 1st, which we were so nervous about the snow, but we went for a Saturday morning.
Okay.
At 11.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's good to make it like, you know, a thing, you know, get some type of.
Food.
Yeah.
Food always reminds people.
Food, definitely. But you know, so more of like a community feel with, with doing this as well.
Yeah.
You know?
Like the chili cook off type thing.
Yeah, doing it in like in tandem somehow with some, some of the stuff that we already do in town.
You've been so informative. Thank you so much. I took like a million notes.
Yeah, I just had two questions for Jill. First off, you know firsthand, being on a planning commission, all these ideas. And, you know, you got town plan zoning and now housing. Do you, I love the idea of, you know, having a separate housing commission. Do you, are you, do you foresee, um, having the same, um, people who are engaged in one thing and all of a sudden it's just another group of the same people where, um, people can get burnt out? I guess is kind of what I'm getting at where, you know, it's something that is, is arduous and.
Yeah, I think you got to try it. I mean, I'm kind of, it, it's interesting because as a, I'm, I'm more of a project management person, so I turn everything into a project. And then we manage our way through it and it, it's worked out. And I'm not really a good policy person as much. And so, but what, what Chester has allowed for their housing commission is they have two reps from the planning commission on the housing commission. Now, one of the guys who's coming on to the planning commission, hope at the end of the year, because we're losing two people, including Al Keeler, which, you know, I'm just really crying about. But he's been on for 15 years. So one of the guys said, oh, you're just going to ruin the planning commission. They're all going to go over to the housing commission. And the one question we're going to ask people, it's on our last slide actually, is, you know, can we interest you in the housing commission? Because we, we just, we need to have more town involvement on the housing side. And we need, you know, it's a, it's a real personal issue for a lot of.
Because right now you don't even have one. You've just been doing it without.
Yeah, and we're in, we're in study mode. And, and so this is a recommendation coming out of this study. So.
But I like that attitude of, like I always said to my second, first, second, third graders, whenever they thought things were overwhelming, that the, the longest journey starts with the first step, you know? Your community forum, that was your first step.
One of my sides, exactly. Exactly.
So we just want to make the first step and then you take it from there.
Exactly, exactly. And we, you know, we've had to moderate. We thought, we'll talk to a housing trust and they'll take over all four sites. And then we realized, you know, they have limited resources. And they have things that they're comfortable with doing and comfort, and not comfortable doing. And they're not, they're really comfortable with rental housing. So you come up with a project and who's your housing trust? You have a different housing trust, right?
We have Windsor. We're Windsor County.
Okay. So, and, you know, it's a matter of getting in there too. I think we thought they would just take over all of our sites. But now we're looking for private developers. And you have to, the other thing we're talking about, um, and we met with Scott Graves from Rutland, um, he's Mon Men LLC. You're familiar with them, I know.
I am.
You're familiar with Dorset. And so, um, he's, where we're headed now as part of developing a compelling pitch to developers is how do we unite our four locations? I mean, we don't have 100 acres to do and we wouldn't want to do 100 acres. So we have a two acre site for apartments. We have a five acre site for 12 units. We have a 10 acre site for 20 to 30 units. And then we have a six acre site for 10 units. So we're, we're kind of like this, but we need a cohesive, um, big picture vision for those sites. And it has to be based on the demographic that we want to attract. So we have to think about that because we're, we're looking like a retirement community right now. Our average age is 56. And we need, we need families.
Tons of incentives and deed, um, deed amendments that you can put on these new homes so that they're very specific to the, to who is able to occupy them, what, what income levels, where they, where they have to work, you know, all, all types of, all types of things. So I know there was, um, a good example from Telluride, you know, around, floating around.
Yeah, no, I, that's my favorite thing, that little array, um, the land sales one. I love that little duplex. And I, they have, yeah, so we showed that in one of our slides.
And that's a really good way to make the, the missing middle, right? So the missing middle, that's where you, do you attract, you know, those families and people that work, you know? And you have to say, okay, if I'm going to get this for a sweet deal, right? As I'm going to get them, you know, something, you know, middle, you know, middle of the, middle of the road housing for kind of low income cost, you know? But there are all these caveats, like you must work within this radius or for the, like in these areas. You have to like live here. You can't sell the house. You can only, you can only appreciate, the house can only appreciate like 3% a year. You know, there's all kinds of, all kinds of things that you can do to control that, control that housing.
You have to, or you're just going to get scammed.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, but that's the point.
Affordable. I mean, I think that's, and the housing trusts have this, um, shared equity model where they own the land and individual pays.
Yeah, the housing trust does that.
So they're really good at keeping it affordable.
Are any of your lots in the Wyndham Windsor housing, are they going to take over any of those lots?
They're going to take the two acres.
The two acres, the apartments?
Get that, yeah, if we can get Orange Lake to move forward on moving their pool and fitness center. Wyndham Windsor isn't ready right now. They've got, you know, like projects in the pipeline and they just keep. So, so we're probably a couple of years away. But, um, it's a long process. It's hard to get, it's a long process. So we just keep pushing.
Good for you. Thank you so much.
So I just had one, yeah, one last one. So. No, no, no.
I'm going to talk to you now.
Um, so you get to the end of the study, you have your final public forum. What is, um, and assuming, hey, you have a housing commission.
Right.
What is that next step for you guys?
So my feeling is, um, moving Orange Lake to get the really very practical stuff. We need site control. Okay? We, we have to have site control. So, um, um, we have Heather Hines who's donating six acres. We want to have a land transaction with Heather. We need to sit down with her, get that donation done. The second thing, uh, is we want to help with the pool and fitness center. How can the town make it easy for Orange Lake to rebuild the pool and fitness center so that we can have access to that? So how do we get a closer partnership? So that's a, a big housing commission piece. Then, um, then we're back into the vision of how do we get a developer? And one of the things I don't understand, and if anybody in the room is an engineer, for those sites, what exactly has to be done? How much is it going to cost, you know? And tell me about each one of these. Because our engineer is presenting all of the next steps, not on each property, but kind of a composite list. And I don't know about the stormwater study, the traffic study, the, you know, um, we've managed to, three out of four, I think, were, are going to be exempt from Act 250 if our map is approved by the Land Use Review Board. So it's really, if you can, you know, this is how you make things easy for developers. Donated land, get out of Act 250, um, you know, provide funding. I heard from the housing trust yesterday that the new apartment building that they put in in Windsor, Windsor actually donated 200,000 to that project to, um, because the road into that apartment building comes off Central Street, not the main street. So the, the town, so, you know, again, this whole thing of the town taking the lead, the town.
The cost per square foot of that place was unbelievable.
Yeah. And so I asked that question too. Um, apparently they had a bunch of soil remediation.
Oh, yeah, they have a bunch of.
They had to build a road.
Yeah.
And there's a third item that I have in my notes if I could dig it out, but I can't remember. But, um, it appears that when you're a housing trust, things cost a little bit more. I like to think developers can still make their 15% and be a little bit scrappy. Although, you know, I think we're looking at 500.
It's, it's infrastructure, it's site work.
Yeah.
It's the lack of infrastructure and, you know, that all these sites are, have steep slopes. They have rocky soils. They have ledge, you know.
Flood zones, maybe.
Yeah.
We eliminated those sites. We're not in any flood.
I think we have more than you do.
Yeah, you, you have a little bit. You need to head for higher ground a little bit. But, you know, keep in mind, the entire south side of 44 through West Windsor is all river quarter. And the past river quarters. So we can't even, we're not, you know, we're not going to do infill or, you know, any of that stuff that.
Expensive stuff.
Yeah. So I think the answer to your question is, once the housing commission gets up to speed, they need to figure that out. We have talked with Scott Graves about him helping us create a vision. We have talked with Scott Graves about him helping us create a vision, and we need to understand who it is we wanna attract. And within our community, we have to start dealing with the economic growth issue, we can continue to be a veteran community for Woodstock and Canover and Springfield and Ludlow, and we're kind of okay with that. But we need to start thinking about economic growth, and, but also what's gonna bring people in.
So that does bring up one, one last question, so.
Yes, good.
You know, I think we can all agree, hey, we want housing. What that looks like can be challenging sometimes, and like, I, I love West Windsor, spent a bunch of time in the Scutney skiing, biking, quiet, sleepy little town.
Yeah.
Have you faced any, or I guess, how have you dealt with the, the not in my backyard of, you know, hey, we wanna do housing, we wanna do an apartment building, we wanna do some of these things that may shift, shift what, what that looks like right now? And is it, you know, you mentioned not getting into the, the weeds of, this is what it will look like, and, and things like that? And maybe you're just at that point where, you know, that, that comes to play when you look at how you're, who you're attracting.
You know, there are some people that no matter what you say, they're always gonna feel that way. And you just gotta hope that there aren't many of them. That the vast majority of people in town will step forward and say, this is a problem. Because, you know, and so, I don't know, I mean, we've tried to really catch our words about density, we've talked about the right size and scale, you know, and, you know, we're not just putting, you know, big housing developments and, and things like that. So, and we showed some, and we say attractive, but it's tricky, because some people, no matter what you say, won't want it. And we hope there are not that many.
I don't remember hearing a lot of that at the first forum that contested.
Yeah.
I actually don't remember hearing any, but maybe there was a little bit.
Maybe a little bit. There's a guy and his father who said, don't mess up the view from 44. And I get it, I'm with him on that. You know what I mean? We know, we had a renovation site, a couple houses and a barn. I'm like, we're doing interior renovations, we're not changing. The, the worst thing is, like, up coaching lane, you know, those two lots were sold, and, you know, there's Ed Connors, like, I hate that new red house, it just like came right into my view. So the worst thing is the sprawl, you know, where we've got these four acre parcels in its house, and then another house, you know, so.
Very nice people going there.
Is there really? No, they're not. But, and it's deep, it's just a surplus.
I can tell that.
But, so, so the support was strong, but there are people in prominent places who are against it, and so it makes it very interesting. So that's more important to have a housing commission, because you need to get more people involved than just the planning commission.
Yeah, so you don't take the heat less of it now, because so many people know that
their kids can't find a house, and, or their grandkids can't find, you know, it's so unaffordable.
It is.
For, you know.
Because in Ludlow, all the houses go, you know, value, probably 100,000 over value, you just can't even compete.
Yeah.
With your $350,000 budget, you know?
And our average sales price, I think, in, was about almost 600,000. There's a lot more inventory on the market now, and I even said to the housing, so there are a couple of condos for sale, maybe 200 something, why don't you take a look at them? But, yeah, but.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Really appreciate it.
And happy to answer any other questions that you guys have. I hope to see y'all on the 27th, but if you can't make it, it's okay. Oh, you said the 27th? 27th September.
Whatever is the Saturday, right?
Yes, whatever it is, it is, two weeks on Saturday. Okay. No, it's not. It's one week on Saturday.
Yeah, it's soon.
Yes, it is.
September gets fast.
Martha, we have you next. Town zoning updates with Martha from Mark.
All right.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you. Great talking with you guys.
Safe travels.
Should've been pulling up my documents.
Good to see you, Martha.
Yeah, you too.
Nice to meet you, Ryan.
Nice to meet you too, Joe.
Let me know if you need me to do anything, Martha. I got, I'm on Zoom here, just in case, you need to share a document or.
Terry, if she shares any documents with you, can you share it with me?
Oh my God, you asked me that last time too, I'm so sorry. I will from now on, I really will. I'm gonna make it out. So many people, I send all that stuff down to.
Yeah, it's, I have a.
In your new email.
What's my new email? It's L. Klaver.
Yeah, my little diabetes.
Oh, Jared's.
Yes.
Just one moment. There you go.
There we go. Hopefully Terry sent you guys the latest copy. What I focused on since we last met was three, four of the zoning districts and most of the definitions, maybe two-thirds of the definitions. But I'm gonna jump ahead to the zoning districts. So I wanted to look at the Lakes District. mainly I wanted to get your input, because you're a lot more familiar with this area than I am. I found the purpose statement a little confusing. It sounds on the one hand like you don't want development there, or you want low-density development, or high standards for development. I just, if you can just tell me more about this district and what.
I, I do wanna mention something, because I brought up what we did about making it commercial to both my sister Julie, who's on the DRB, and my husband Phil, who's on the DRB, and they said the Lakes people do not want it to be commercials, so on commercial. And we are gonna get a whole lot of backlash if we do that. I actually asked Judy, because I know she was a, she lived by the lakes, if, but I asked her at the last minute if she could invite any of them here today from the Lakes Association. I sent that email to you. My email is so screwed up. I can't wait till I get my fiber from TBS now. But they said, they adamantly said, those people are gonna scorch you for doing that, because they don't want that, and they're mad that it's grandfathered in all the places that it is grandfathered.
Was the, was the concern that there are a few retail operations there, and if they changed hands, you would want them to be able to?
The concern was they don't want commercial at all.
So what, if they did change hands, they would want them to become residential?
Yeah, that's, that's the general feeling I get.
Okay.
What, what are we, commercial, were you even talking about here?
Well, the last time we met, we talked about the Mountain Sugar House.
Yeah.
That we.
It was to be an auto move.
The Lakes District, retail instead of, you know, just residential. And we all kind of agreed, that's a great idea. I don't think you were here, Ted, were you here? Yeah, and.
Maybe not at that one, I don't know.
This is coming out of the list earlier. Yeah, you know, one, go ahead, keep moving.
Oh yeah, because you have a commercial business there, but there's a grandfathered anyway.
Yeah, well, themselves.
And it limits your ability to sell, because it's no longer commercial.
You couldn't, could you do that?
I could say, but that can happen.
Because you're taking a self-storage facility that's worth.
Yeah.
$2 million, and now saying it's worth $0.
Yeah, exactly.
Because it can't be in its current use, so.
We need to invite them here, though, to make that decision, because they, I don't know, do not want it.
Oh, it's incredibly clear that everybody in the, on the, on the Lake Committee, on the, you know, doesn't want, and it makes no sense for commercial to be in the Lakes District, there's no infrastructure there, you don't have the traffic, you know, what's there, what's existing now, though, we can't just make uncon-, non-conforming and make it worthless.
Well, no, it is, it isn't zone commercial currently.
It isn't currently.
It isn't currently.
So.
And we were saying to zone it commercial, it isn't currently.
So how does, how are, how are those commercial businesses able to be there now currently then?
Because they're grandfathered.
Yeah, so like pre-zoning, they were all put in, basically?
Yeah.
Were they?
Yeah, what you put that sort of.
The storage.
What do you know about it, Ted?
Yeah.
You aren't going back to date.
Those were like 20 years ago, though. Those were only like 20 years ago.
I'm not, when I was born.
No, just when the mini storage went in.
No, me, yes.
Yeah.
The property's been commercial in a gravel pit since Mr. Flanders owned it.
Still a change of use to get from that to.
Bugsy.
Storage, though.
So that goes way back.
How old is the Lakes District zoning?
Or, or before.
Yeah.
Because village zoning is 2008, no, 2006, right? That's when village zoning started.
It was in town zoning, 1990 or something. Didn't it start then?
2006, I think. Do you know, Jared?
Not on hand.
Okay.
No, I go back as far as 2007, but I don't know.
We had zoning.
Prior to that.
And you had zoning. When I started with the planning commission in 2001 or 2, there was already zoning. I mean, that's as far as I can.
On the village document, the first adoption of zoning on there says 2006, because I looked up.
That's the village without the town.
Ordinance was 2008, yeah, the town. Yeah, I just gotta look at that document. Oh, we got it right here. Adopted January 2006.
This one says, the one I have says February 2005.
You have storage units, we have the jewelry store, Green Mountain Sugar House.
Peter Manshaw.
Clear, what about Clear Lake, is that?
Clear Lake.
Oh yeah, Clear Lake.
I, I, I don't know.
The Lakes District.
The place that was an auto place.
Yeah, the auto place. It's not there anymore, though.
No, it isn't, but.
And the jewelry store's not there.
And the jewelry store's not there, but there were five.
There was that antique store that turned into a.
Antique place.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And put it set.
That was.
A single-family home, now.
Now it's a single-family home.
Okay.
So.
Do you have a map?
So there were six in that. At one time.
Because we made some of that, yeah, we made some of that RC2, right?
I'm just saying, that change is not gonna fly.
One hundred?
They're all on 100.
So that might be something you could speculate.
Yeah, so the west side of 100 is RC2.
Oh, currently.
Yeah.
So the change we were gonna make was to make it all commercial? Martha, is that the change we agreed to last time?
You added to go use goods or services.
Because RC2 makes sense for that.
The west side, because I touched into my development.
Yeah, so it's not on, it's the opposite side of Lake.
The line's just a little bit in.
Yeah, so we don't wanna change that to residential, we just don't wanna make the change at all.
So Rod and Gun Club South is also, that's where it changes to RC1, so like Clear Lake would be probably the lot line where it's, that's RC1 already, and then everything on the east side, up past, you know, like up East Lake Road, and on the east side of 100, looks like it's Lakes District. Yeah, it's on the shoreline, it's on the shoreline parcels. So what are we looking to change?
We just, we just wanted to turn back the change we already did, because it's.
No, like there's a jewelry shop that's over, it's right.
The change we did a couple months ago, was it?
I'm there, Green Mountain Sugar House is right there.
Last month we talked about.
Yeah, last month, we don't wanna make that change.
And they serve creamy, so I don't know, that's like a restaurant sort of.
I think we marked that out just if we wanted to change it, and we said yes. Martha, was that changed?
I mean, I put it in there, but you can take it out again.
I think we should take it out, what do you guys think?
Don't you have to do a hearing for that? And you make a change on it?
Well, yeah, that, we would have to take all of this to a public hearing, we'd be all done with it, yeah, so.
So that doesn't mean that we made the change, we just.
We're just talking about it, wanna undo it, that's what I'm saying. Undo the idea of changing it.
And then you have RC1 again. Where is it? Yeah, like up here, it goes back to RC1, like it goes to RC2, but then, I mean, it's right on the town line, it's gotta be.
That's, that's Tyson, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be the Tyson General Store, and like everything on that side.
Okay.
Goes back to RC1.
Tyson.
I feel like it's a little weird that it goes back to RC1, though.
The boundary is the bridge before the Tyson Store.
Oh, it's right there.
Yeah, so everything there down to, I guess it would be like Benson Point is RC1.
Yep, it's a little bit beyond Benson's Point going north, but yeah, it's basically Tyson Store and the parcels on the left right before the inn, right before the Plymouth Town Line.
Yeah, like where the, that bridge is, yeah, yeah. The library is a library.
There's a little teeny library.
Yeah.
That's in Plymouth, though, that's not.
The bridge is the line.
Yeah, the bridge is the line.
The, the library is right near the inn.
Yeah, so that's in Plymouth.
That's Plymouth, definitely Plymouth.
The bridge is the inn.
Yeah.
Just a little weird that all that's RC, now that I'm looking at that map.
The bridge right next to the Tyson Store. Right, the one with the culvert.
It's all like. Good luck.
So can we agree to not make that change?
And leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is.
Yeah, it's all residential over there.
Okay, so Genie agrees to leave it the way it is, anybody else? Oh, in favor of that? Because we don't wanna.
Leave the Lakes District the way it is currently zoned.
The commercial areas, the RC, you know, the residential commercial areas, leave it the way they are, everything leave it the way it is.
Whoever made the map, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Who did that one?
Good thing we had the map.
Yep.
Now it's clear.
So just leave the Lakes as it is in the current zoning.
This was 15 years ago when I was on.
But we wanna clean up this sentence, to protect shorelines of waters that are unsuitable for development, to maintain a low density of development, and to maintain high standards of quality for permitted development, I've never seen that before. To maintain high standards of quality for permitted development, is so subjective.
I guess, so the question is, for me was, the area, what, what's unsuitable? What's, what part of this?
I'm bet you what they're saying, that was saying is that they don't want any more just plain camps, maybe, with no septics.
I think the point is, it's not clear.
Yeah.
Anything that's against the shoreline minimums, how, how we look at it, that's how, you know, zoning, we go off of, our basic, basic permits, setbacks and density, but shoreline has higher standards and.
Yeah, the Shoreline Protection Act.
Yeah.
Yeah, 250-foot setbacks, 100-foot no cut.
And Martha said she, that's reflected in the zoning already, the shoreline protector.
That's in there, and I updated it, so.
To include it.
Yeah, it's the bottom language right there.
So what's our suggestion for fixing that top sentence?
What, what?
The one that you said was convoluted?
Yeah, so the question is, what's, what's unsuitable for development?
Yeah.
Is it completely built out and there's no room for, I guess, more development? Or?
It's pretty much completely built out.
Making that possible.
With big mansions.
So it's pretty, it's pretty dense out there already.
I mean, with the new rules about two-unit dwelling and accessory dwelling, people who have an existing house have a right to convert it to a duplex or to add an ADU, I mean.
Right, as long as it's not bigger than their house.
But they just don't have the infrastructure, right, so they're not, they don't, they're never gonna be able to get a septic.
Right.
A good point.
So that's, you know, that's the other big issue. That's like, you know, so. With the lake districts, I look at the Lakeshore Protection Act is gonna take care of the vast majority of any issues that we would have.
Yeah, good point.
As well as limitations of, um, utilities. I mean, we have. We have issues out there. Where there are properties on original septic systems and the septic systems under the camp that's on Piers. You know, and it's on less than a tenth and less than a tenth of an acre, you know.
It's jumping into the lake.
Yeah, so.
For years.
If the, if the day ever comes where there's a sewer line servicing the entire lake, then this conversation can get a lot.
How far does the sewer line go now?
Does it go past the village? Does it go past the fire department?
Yeah, fire department, well, other than in like Jackson Gore.
It's an option.
But it goes around the mountain.
Yeah, it's mountains, different, different action.
Yeah.
Just take it out.
We want to take that sentence out because Ryan is saying the shoreline production stuff already covers that. Is that, everybody comfortable with that? Take that part of the sentence out. Is that your advice Martha?
Which part?
Um, to protect shorelines of waters that are unsuitable for development. To maintain a low density of development and to maintain high standards of quality for permitted development? We want it gone?
I'll just, I can revise it to.
Yeah, can you do that?
Make it that.
Yeah.
It's heavily built out and.
Yeah.
Right.
Additional development will depend on the ability to, you know, get water, sewer setbacks and.
Yeah, that would be great.
That's gonna be very restrictive out there.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
Oh, so you've already said that with what you added, the year round ones there. That sentence you added, already says that.
And I'll just try to talk about, you know, characterize the neighborhood service area as it is.
Okay.
Now existing.
They run sewer lines under rivers?
Um, under the district standards for that district, it says forty thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Just. Based on new state laws, you can't require additional. Uh, lot area for an ADU or a duplex, so. We'll have to take out the per dwelling unit part of that.
Okay.
Okay.
For the lot area minimum.
Oops, oh, never mind.
So if you have a non-conforming law. You can add an ADU.
If you have the sewer capacity.
If you have the sewer more.
Septic capacity.
If you need setbacks.
Yeah, as long as you're not increasing the degree of non-conformity.
Yes.
That's how the language works. As long as you're not. Non-con, increasing non-conformity as far as your coverage maximums and your.
Yeah.
Anything else.
Then I thought it'd be good to look at the residential district, the. Residential, commercial, residential, commercial two, all at the same time. They're all residential districts and to see how they relate, which is why I sent that. Excel file, just listing all the current uses and I'm gonna switch over to that.
Which is in our packets too.
I mean. The top ones, they're basically all the same, so. That's probably not a lot to talk about there unless you disagree with anything with them. It was more the conditional uses.
Yeah, they vary a lot.
They vary quite a lot. Um, RC one has a lot more. Which is what? That's the pink or the purple?
The pink.
The pink on the map. So closer in to the village.
Yeah.
So it may make sense. I just wanted to put them next to each other so you could look at them and see. Are there things that are in there that shouldn't be or that are not in there that should be? I've also, I don't have it on here and maybe I should, but I also looked at. The Village RC and the Village Residential because. You know, they overlap. You know, in certain spots and.
So they're in this Excel sheet too, the Village ones?
Pardon?
They're in this Excel sheet, the Village RCs? Are they in this Excel sheet you made of the uses?
No, they're not.
They're not, okay.
This is just the, this is just the town.
Right, just the town.
If I, if they're bolded, it's because they're in all three of the districts.
Oh, good.
So again, I just need feedback from you if you see things that are in there that shouldn't be in there. Um, that are not in there.
Didn't you just kind of do all these for the, the village and then we adopted them for the town?
Yeah, I don't think you necessarily, I mean, because the village is so dense, you don't necessarily. For example. Um, you might not want to, I mean, you can have a campground in. One of these in a town residential. You probably don't want a campground in the village. So it makes sense that.
Yeah.
Sand and gravel pit, you're not gonna want that in the village.
Yeah.
Too noisy.
So, so I guess the point is why, why are we looking at this and why?
Well, one reason for me was I noticed, and I'd, I'd have to go back to your, the other document, but. The descriptions for RC one and RC two are almost identical. And then all the uses are very different. So what, what is the real difference between RC one and RC two? That. Results in such a difference.
Yeah, difference, yeah.
Is it the location of them?
Yeah, RC two, I mean, I was on the planning commission when we added that. That was, must have been like twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. And the idea with it was just that we, we felt that there was too many. That RC one was too, I mean, the RC district when there was just the RC one at the time. It ventured too far out of the village. And creating an RC two was to give rid of some of the uses that we felt didn't belong that far from the downtown. Yeah, I mean, that was, that was definitely our conversations at the time.
Yeah, that's, I think they're based on.
I don't know how it's changed since then, I guess.
So one thing I was wondering is, um. So the purpose of RC one. To provide for limited commercial uses in areas where there is residential development to serve primarily the needs of those residents. The character of this area should be protected, enhanced with the provision of shopping facilities. Then underneath the. Uses, it says district standards, the clear purpose and desired character of this district. Is to encourage small business locally owned that blend in with the current small town charm. And preserve the vitality of mainstream businesses. Our town will not support businesses that draw away from the economy of our downtown. We want to maintain the character of this district. The character is rural, quiet with private homes with the quality of life people have come to appreciate and respect.
That was our paragraph to try to keep the big boxes out.
Seems totally in conflict with the first few sentences.
Yeah, I think there was a big fear at the time that we wrote this about, uh, the Dollar General that was going into Chester.
Big boxes, yeah.
And in general, the idea that we were going to, yeah, I think we were worried. Yeah, again, this is a bit into the weeds, but, yeah, I think there was, like, there's the parcel out by Bixby Road. And there was some rumor somewhere along the way that that was gonna turn into a, a Dollar General. And so the idea was, like, we want, we don't want. That kind of development that far from downtown. We don't want to restrict the idea of like. You know, at the time, uh, what the barbecue place was out there. Like that type of business, we wanted to continue to allow. We didn't want to say that they were not allowed to do that. But we didn't want something like, you know, like a Dollar General or a Shaw's going in that far from, from the village.
Yeah, to take away from the village economy.
And that was, that's where the, drawing away from the vitality of Main Street line, that was what that was about. I think there's that same fear. I mean, there was that same fear and discussion obviously around like, uh, Jackson Gore and. Okemo, just, you know, the more businesses they add, the less reason for the people that are staying on the mountain to come into town. We want to try to. Limit that when we can and make sure that people do still have a reason to visit the village because that's. You know, the economic development is the entire draw of the village and the only way that we survive is as a town or as an economy.
That's exactly true. Why that paragraph's there.
Yeah.
So my, my question after looking at all this was, is it fair to say that RC one is primarily commercial? But includes some residential? And RC two is primary, primarily residential, but includes some?
You got it.
I think that's true.
Yeah.
I would say that's true.
That's true.
Okay.
And I think to some extent, I mean, if you think of it kind of as a sliding scale, I think the RC. Village RC is primarily commercial with some residential. And then RC one is, the town RC one is really somewhere in between that where it's kind of a mix of both. A more balanced mix of both.
As you move further out.
And then the RC two is really like, no, this is mostly residential, but we don't want to disallow. People from being able to have a, a small business out of their house or Fletcher Farm from doing.
Yeah.
You know, however you want to characterize what they do.
Art, art school.
All kinds of educational programs.
So the district standards under RC two are exactly the same as RC one and. I'm just thinking if they are actually different in character.
The district standards should reflect that.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the wording should be flipped around a little bit.
Yeah, so I just. Again, wanted to get your feedback and see if I can tweak this language at all and.
Yeah, and do you guys agree with that definition of RC two and RC one? I do too. It makes sense.
I'm curious, loving the barbecue place, is that always like kind of country store that was down?
Yeah, what was it called? Little Country Store at the time? I mean, now it's been, you know, it's been out of business for years and they moved. They moved up to Mount Holly, but, uh, you know, at the time that we wrote the zoning, that was definitely like, you know, it was one of my favorite restaurants. I would go there for lunch all the time.
Squeals on wheels.
Yeah, squeals on wheels, Little Country Store, yeah.
I was just trying to think of.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been for supper.
Yeah, there's, obviously there's mini storage out there too, right across from that.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Marketing company, I don't know what they do, but they're, every now and then they're.
They get all those little roof covers, meetings there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did a tax debate with them once.
So if I can give you homework, if you don't mind, just to look at this, the Excel spreadsheet and see if anything looks off.
Okay, okay.
What's in or what's not in each of those districts. And I'll try to work on some language to describe them that distinguishes them a little bit.
I agree.
Terry, I just had a quick question. Looking at RC one, RC two, the permitted use, all the same, conditional use is different. And conditional use, and I, and I totally get the point of having the two districts, but when it's conditional use. You have the ability to appeal or to go through the process of, of getting your use permitted. And it opens the door to things that we may not want to have. Is that?
Conditional use goes to the DRB.
Yeah, so.
So permitted use is be, is able to be signed off on by the ZA.
Yeah.
And conditional use goes to the DRB and they take into a more holistic approach into.
Police Department ways in, Fire Department ways.
So I guess, is there, if you had, just for example, if you had. Just town residential, commercial, um, and you didn't have two, that was a little more restrictive. Um, it opens the door to say, hey, um, a motel is permitted. We don't necessarily want a motel, but they can go plead their case. And win at that, win at the DRB, um, when we say, or, you know, the Dollar General, for example. They could, they could do that and because they're just looking at zoning regs, they have the ability to win that case and have it, even though the town doesn't necessarily want it. Well, I don't think I.
The DRB can put conditions on it.
I would disagree, yeah.
Okay.
So I think that's where like what Martha's talking about, the language about the district standards really comes into play. The, the DRB. I think at different times, people have a misunderstanding or misconception of what the DRB does, but the DRB is really. Uh, very similar to the ZA. Like the ZA is not supposed to put their thumb on the scale. They're really supposed to look at, look at.
Criteria.
The design elements, the setbacks, you know, it's very black and white. The DRB can be a, like, maybe a little more gray, but it really is like a quasi judicial board. They really have to have a reason to be able to deny a permit. And where, where there maybe a little bit of gray area comes in is like in the district standards. Where it says that, you know, the purpose of this district is primarily residential with very limited. Commercial uses, the DRB could take that language and issue a decision and then.
Back it up.
And have it backed up by like, well, you know, like there is not other stores in this area. Like, you know, like with an auto service station, like there is a mechanic out here. There's already those kinds of things. So you're more likely to get that or be able to appeal it if the DRB denies you. Appeals from the DRB go to the, right now, the environmental.
Federal court.
Court, but, you know, that's gonna go to the LRB soon. Um, and then that'll, that process is changing. But. I think the, the district standards are like the really important piece there because you talk about the different characters of the neighborhoods and the type of thing that you want. And that's where the map really comes in too, is because you're, you're talking a lot about. Like what exists within those districts now. And, you know, like if it already exists within the district, the way the maps are drawn, you can get it permitted. Much easier, you have a much stronger case to get it permitted again going forward.
Great, and I, I fully agree with that, just curious about how it all works.
Yeah, that was a good question. For sure.
So then, I'm not gonna go through it every definition.
We trust you.
Counting on you to look at them. They, what I was trying to do is make them consistent with the. Um, village. For the most part, but there were a few. Dwelling units. So again, I, I mentioned it before. Under your definition, it says each dwelling unit shall constitute a separate unit for purposes of calculating the lot area minimum required in zoning district. First of all, that's not really part of the definition of what a dwelling unit is, so I think you should probably take it out, but it's also no longer true because of.
Yeah, the changes.
Yeah.
About accessory dwellings.
One eighty-one changes, so. Um, and that was not taken out of the village. It should be when you merge the two, but.
Yeah.
It should come out of this one. And. Hotel. Oh, so it's used here and there in the documents? But it's not listed as a permitted or a conditional use anywhere. So the, the question there is.
Why is it here?
Do you want to allow hotels in any of the town districts? So.
Let's say the village, but we don't want the town.
And again, you don't have to have an answer right now, but you can include that in your work.
Well, I guess it's Jackson Gore Inn technically, but I would think that's a hotel. I would think it would be allowed in the map district.
By definition, that building's a hotel.
Yeah.
And doesn't, should I want to build a huge hotel?
I already want to build condos.
It's condos, not a hotel?
Some potential by the golf course that was floated, yeah.
Yeah, you talked about bringing out the water before you did anything though.
Yeah, getting the water to go all the way out there. For the septic.
So just something to think about whether you want to add hotels as a conditional use in any of the districts.
So which one's the concierge and whatever you have businesses within them.
Yes.
The junkyard in the village regulations, it says there's a separate junkyard ordinance. I don't know, does the town also have a separate junkyard?
Yes, I believe so.
We worked on that recently, like the last few years because of.
About a year.
Because of some junkyards in town.
Okay.
Brendan wanted us to work on.
Understand that and. Light industry. Light industry, um, so that's the other term that's not used in the document. Don't know if you want to allow light dis, light industry anywhere. So you can think about that with the hotel.
Well, don't you already have it with Geowind? Let's light industry.
That's in the industrial.
The industrial area. The industrial area of town.
You know, I don't know if I would call that even light industry. That's pretty heavy.
It must be under heavy because.
Yeah, it's only industrial use.
It wasn't used in the document.
Why does it say eighty and then it went to see seventy?
I also highlighted that.
And what is the, what is the noise section saying? Eighty or seventy?
Seventy is pretty quiet. Seventy is listed here, TV audio, human voice at ten feet.
Oh.
That seems unrealistic as.
Yeah.
Standard.
Eighty makes sense, machine tools.
Thinking you probably, if you keep this in here, you don't need to unless you are adding it as a conditional use to one of the districts. Um, but if you do, we'll change that to eighty, so.
I would think like clear light furniture could be light industry.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
They're not real noisy over there.
Yeah, you might want to look at your R C two too, because I know that, I remember when we put that in, we had added that strip up by like the Smith Airfield. Because we knew that they did some amount of machining and machine repairs.
Yeah, and he just like creates things and has tons of pat.
Yeah, so I remember we kind of added that in so that we weren't, weren't making him non, you know, again, like trying to. Make sure that the district reflected the uses that were there.
Yeah.
I feel like that would probably be something that you would classify as light industry. I don't, I don't know that they do that anymore.
So both of those things are in R C two?
That'd be R C two, yeah.
East Hill.
But I, I know you got other things, so I don't want to take up any of your time, but if you can look at the.
What clear light is R C one, actually?
No.
Yeah.
So that's right on the line.
And they may have got like special permitting to do.
It's like right on the corner. It's R C one.
Conversation with the neighbors when they came in, but that was in the mid nineties.
Jared?
Um, as long as we're on definitions, I have a quick question regarding another one that doesn't appear anywhere else but the definitions. I was wondering if we could make it appear elsewhere. Uh, and that would be well shield.
Oh, that's a big one.
So particularly it would be nice to see it in the subdivision regulations, but even, even in. Any one of the other town districts or um, town districts, because most of the village is.
We do have a definition here.
Well, that definition seems to address some of that main problem.
You know, we've had people come and say, it's not in the subdivision regulations. Why are you giving us agita at the hearings?
It should be both, it should be in both.
Not in there and they ask for it, so.
Yeah, it just needs to be in there.
You know, the state law does allow like.
The state law does allow.
So I don't know if you can be more restrictive than what the state.
That's another contentious topic.
I think you can.
You can't unless the state explicitly tells you Dylan or Dylan's rule or Dylan's state. We only have the authority granted to us by the, explicitly granted to us by the state to regulate.
So I'd have to look into it and see what.
Yeah, we'll have to look into it.
Can you get an easement? Definition. You can if it's on your own property. So if you have two adjacent properties, you can write into your deed, easement. For the well to extend onto the other property.
You can't get it from your neighbor to allow that.
I don't think so, no.
Is that the same with subdivision?
Because then, yeah, because then property changes hands and de-gages the property because you can't building the well shield.
See if we're in a hurry. Okay.
So that's why that's, that's in there.
I'll let you take over with part.
Okay, Martha, um, now we have Logan here to talk about, one of the things we've been talking about in our planning commission is, um. Ways to create more parking spaces in Ludlow. And I did invite Ron a couple ti- a few times, but yeah, I haven't heard from him. I don't know if he even texts his email. I should probably should have tried calling him, but we have Logan here and he has maps and, and I know you guys did a study. Was it two thousand twenty-three of possible places to add parking? The town shouldn't talk about, we stopped there. My tax bill is on my. I noticed. Oh, yeah, look at that, look at that cheap taxes we pay on our West Street property, hundred twenty-nine acres. Go look at that. It's in land use. I can't believe it's in here. Jared, what are you doing here? You got my tax document in here.
My, my coworker just Blu-ray passed me with that one.
Yeah, I didn't get this in the mail, so I asked her to send it to me.
That's awesome.
Look at those awesome payments, fifty dollars a quarter.
That is awesome. Um, yeah, I mean, I don't have much prepared. Uh, I printed out all of the, the maps for the different studies that we've done over the years. I didn't know if you wanted to, um, you know, just see some of these bigger.
Any reason to get out the move would be great.
But, yeah, I mean, basically this is, this is what you have. Um, at different times, I know there has been a conversation about the town leasing more of, uh. Like the southern parts of the Shaw's lot. And take over some of those spots. I think that's in one of our documents. Um, I also, I haven't matched this with, uh, I wanted to, yeah, but they haven't finished painting. I really want to map this, match this with the, the lines as they've actually been painted now, post paving project. Um, to make sure that it still is the same number of parking spaces that we had before.
Is it supposed to be? Because we definitely lost four down in front of.
We lost some, some have moved.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I'm curious to see how that plays out. I don't know exactly. Um, yeah, but it seems like it is different than it was before.
And the Dunkin' Donuts spot too, is that parking's gone, right in front of Dunkin' Donuts?
They painted the north side of the road.
Okay, yeah.
And so I think those, I, I, I think those are still going to come back. I have those plans. They're painting plans here too. Um, but yeah, I mean, I'm not sure. Until they painted, it feels like I'm not exactly sure. Um, the only other study I'm aware of, and I don't know that it's ever been formalized, but there was. You know, some rough numbers drawn for, uh, head in parking on the south side of Main Street and then. You know, two travel lanes instead, you know, on the other side. Now, you can't do that now because they just repaved. And you have to pave differently when you're going to do that because center lines and. Um.
And when Aaron was on.
Yeah, the way you do draining.
When Aaron was on the planning commission, he measured the whole town and realized we could put diagonal spots, but completely got shut down by.
Yeah, that was the, the plans I was, yeah, that, those are rough numbers, not necessarily engineered, but, uh, you know, he had. Kind of drawn some of that up and decided that if you did, I think it was thirty degree. That you didn't necessarily lose spots, but you created more functional spots and you didn't have as much, um. Yeah, parallel spots that people don't use or use in weird ways sometimes.
We have people backing into one oh three though, so there's that.
It's, yeah, I mean statistically, it's actually, they're better.
Slows people down.
Um, for some of those reasons, it creates more ability to do pump outs, things like that, that slow traffic down. Uh, and they're actually, they're safer, uh, because your sight lines are better, depending on the angle that you use. Uh, that's where the thirty versus the forty-five or the sixty degree angle.
Oh.
Is a really big deal. Um, and the thirty being the one that gives you the least amount of spaces on the other side. Um, you know, because it's not like straight in ninety, obviously gives you the most amount of spaces because you're, you're all straight in. But the more angle that you have, the less overall spaces you're going to gain. But it also increases your, um. It makes it easier to pull out, it makes it safer. There are studies about that that I can show. I don't, I don't know what else you want to, you know, I mean, I'm here, I'm happy to.
So I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Yeah.
The, the spaces that are getting bought out by FEMA that can't have any development on them. Can they be parking areas?
They have to be grass.
No, I mean, they can't be a previous surface as far as I know. Maybe it, I mean, I don't know the specific agreements and that could change, but like I know most of the locations that. Like Timberland.
Yeah.
Uh, that has to be very limited uses that you can do there. Uh, they didn't like.
That's what I've been told. It has to have vegetation.
Yeah, it has to have vegetation, but they don't like, they didn't like even the idea of a nursery, I had heard. That was something that was floated at different times by the, you know, the tree committee and others. Um, you know, talked about doing some, some level of like municipal nursery for municipal street trees. And they didn't like that.
Excuse me, who is they?
Uh, FEMA.
But I think Brendan's talked about using that area for water storage in a flood in the Little League area and that area.
Yeah, there's been, that's been floated too. I think the, the Little League area that. Yeah, again, it's not, I don't know, not necessarily my purview, but I, I have heard that they're, they're okay with that. Restoring access to that flood plain that's in the, the Little League area. And that being a flood storage potential.
I was mostly thinking about where the subway was. Uh, all that could be converted to parking.
That's been, that's been purchased.
It's privately owned.
Oh, I thought that was a.
No, no.
No.
No for a human bio.
No, they got, yeah, they got to nod their, yeah.
That's Emily's, Emily's boyfriend owns that and he's leasing it to the construction crew to park their cars, their, their trucks and stuff there right now.
Gotcha.
Um, so the parking spaces in front of Dunkin' Donuts. And now if maybe the sign gets moved, is that going to allow for, um. Pedestrian pathway through there?
Yeah, because, because I went to the trustees meeting and Brendan said that's doable, having a sidewalk from the. From the stoplight to the Shaw's, the bridge before Shaw's.
Okay.
He said that that could be done this year.
That would be great.
And the village trustees agreed to that, but.
Moving the crosswalk from.
Creating a crosswalk from the stoplight down that side of the street, the Dunkin' Donuts side of the street to the bridge in front of Shaw's. That's something we came to that.
So where the sign is now for the mobile?
Yeah.
Where the, the.
We had a good sidewalk, not a crosswalk. Yeah, that's not, they're not doing that now as part of this project though.
I know, he said it could happen though.
Yeah.
But now he's leaving, so.
I hope so.
And I mean, the trustees wanted to happen too. It actually came from Justin, the trustees and from us.
Trustees are about to not exist, hopefully.
I know, that's true.
Well, but it doesn't mean that that project can exist.
Yeah, I, I haven't, I, you know, I, I can do things like that. I do, that's what I do, but I haven't done. They haven't asked me for help with any of those grants or, you know, I can get bike and ped grants for that kind of stuff, but.
Good to know.
Sometimes it makes it harder.
Our question too, Logan, is do we need an engineering study to increase parking and to get some ADA site, parking spaces in town?
You do. Yeah, I mean, you need an ADA transition plan. Um, you know, this is something that, that hasn't come up yet a lot. But it should be coming up more. Uh, every town should have an ADA transition plan for. How they get to, I think by twenty twenty-seven, you need to, uh. Be compliant with the new ADA regulations. And part of that involves a transition plan for showing how you're going to get there. You are, as part of, you know, ADA regulations, you are required to have a certain amount of. Handicap accessible spaces. Um, those have to have clear zones. As far as I know, there are no spots in the village that would meet that. Because they don't have van accessibility anywhere. Um. That's, you know, a little beyond the scope of work that I, I have done. I've been starting to get some, you know, going to some seminars and trainings on some of that stuff because I'm really curious about it. But it's kind of a bigger thing that not a lot of people are focused on right now because there's, you know, a million other things to think about. Um, but, you know, if they start cracking down, uh, then basically no town would be compliant. Um, and no town is really, as far as I know, actively working on their ADA transition plan with the, the. Urgency that they should for what, you know, what it's going to entail. Has been my read on it so far. Yeah, again, I'm not, definitely not an expert in it, but it seems like there's a lot to do there. And there's not a lot of, like in Ludlow, if you don't have a parking lot. Then you're just never going to be able to meet those, meet the demands of what ADA spots are. The only municipal lot that we have is down by the, um. Down by the fire station, that's a municipal parking lot. That is registered with the state as a parking lot. I don't know that it counts for anything just because it's so far out, out of the village center. It's far from any actual businesses that you. You know, want to support. Um, and there's no ADA accessibility because you have no sidewalks that far down. I don't know that there's any marked spots.
There's one.
Anyway, maybe one, yeah.
In the, in the.
But the paint's all faded and it's not necessarily, um.
Yeah.
Valuable much anyway.
So about the, um, electric light office. Does that have land adjacent to it that belongs to the electric light?
I mean, to some extent, a little bit, right?
I mean, I.
We, we own the lot. We own the lot, we own the land.
Yeah.
We own the parking, that, you know, the whole.
But how far does that land extend, like towards Sunoco?
Right where the fences.
Yeah, you, you can see.
Yeah, right where the, yeah, it's like a tree line.
So could that be a municipal lot?
That's what I wonder. That's a good wonder.
Yeah, I have all kinds of. I have all kinds of grand schemes about just getting rid of that building and having the electric department move into the school.
Stay on, um.
Topic.
This is parking. Yeah, I think that, um, we should all keep it on our radar, um, given that, um. The Brew Fest is for sale and maybe selling soon. And that might jeopardize that parking, so the select board maybe should be looking at that.
Is that Brew Fest and T P W? Or is that?
There's the same owner as I, I think.
I believe so.
My understanding is the one owner is selling both.
Right, selling both, okay, because, because I think the parking lot's part of the T P W property.
The people that own it, own both buildings plus the parking lot.
Those, those, my understanding too.
So, um, that would be a big loss for, um, village parking.
Logan, could you get ADA if you had diagonal parking?
That's a good question. Because that thirty percent is the way to go.
I think so, but you know, I mean, any accessibility cuts into spite.
Yeah.
Yeah, it cuts into a spot. It eliminates a spot because you have to have clear zone next to the spot.
Get your wheelchair out of.
And your clear zone can't be, you know, like a fire hydrant, which is people try to do that, people do that, and that's not okay. Because you can't do that, but, um, you know, your clear zone has to be otherwise a location that. Could be a parking space for ADA accessibility. Or for handicap accessibility.
Okay, so our next move is engineering study to where we can add parking in Ludlow. Is that our next move to like get a grant to do that? I have, I have, have that into cherry. That's something we want. Our grant person, our grant writing person.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know, there's not a lot of gr- there's not a grant that I can. That I can think of offhand other than, you know, like maybe a municipal planning grant that would cover that and those aren't out right now. There's nothing open at the moment.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe TAP?
TAP?
Maybe.
TAP?
Have you ever heard of that with TAP?
Is that transportation?
Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP.
I don't know.
I don't know, they do scoping, you can do scoping studies with TAP.
I know it sometimes.
I think the reality is that the towns, we need to realize that we need to, we need to purchase land.
I was just going to say, so.
There's, we have nothing to engineer. We need to purchase land. There are, there are.
Engineers something to work on.
Two.
Yeah.
There are two very, they're for sale and. Properties are just sitting there. That would be. properties are just sitting there. That would be ideal.
Yeah.
And.
And they're ridiculously expensive.
They've been sitting there forever and they're for sale. Has anyone approached them? Has any, like, you know, there's, there's no.
The one right across the street here, he's talking about Lynn Brew Fest.
Ellison and Brew Fest.
Oh, the Ellison block.
And I wonder what the rents are at Brew Fest, like, you know, for both of those properties. It could be.
Yeah.
Also, the trustees know that, 'cause they pay the rent, right?
Well, no, I mean, like, well, Brew Fest.
So.
How much they pay to lease the space.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, but I think if there is any recommendation from this board to the select board and trustees is to purchase land.
Hmm.
We made that recommendation, Lexis.
I was gonna say, that's, we keep.
What else? What else can we, that's, that's all we're here to do.
We just gotta go there and beat our gates.
Yeah, I know, that's it, I mean.
The recommendation back to this board is probably gonna be like, can you allow commercial businesses in Main, on Main Street to count municipal parking spots as their own for purposes of.
We're out, we are allowing it now.
We, we do within, what, a thousand?
And change of use.
Yeah, within a thousand.
Within a thousand feet of the door. But, you know, the other thing too is that these lots, so like the Potbelly Lot, so, right, you, you're gonna go four stories up there on the ground level. They're gonna have to allocate, like, space for a parking garage, for their own parking for that property. That's what going up benefits you, is you have the ground level.
Can't go up four unless they have affordable housing, though, right?
Well, whatever, but again, going up, that's what it affords you, is you have parking on the first level, on the ground floor, you know, so.
'Cause they haven't submitted any plans, right, Jared?
They have.
They have?
Today.
What's it like?
I haven't had a chance to look through them, so. We just gotta look through them more tomorrow.
I'm coming to visit you tomorrow.
It's from the Gorm stores, they just about that the other day.
Okay, so we're gonna move on. Um, thank you so much, Logan.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, I don't know, let me.
We'll, we'll all be watching with a pink mark, so.
Let me think about, I mean, I can leave these maps here too. I can print out, I've said this before, but we have a plotter at Mark. We don't use it enough, the ink, like, it starts to get splotchy and it doesn't work well. So it really is better the more we print on it. Um, you know, the maps are better. Uh, I can print anything. Um, PDFs are better, 'cause they're, these expand, but these were eight and a half by eleven PDFs. This is like what it came out as. This is the resolution it came out as. So it, it expands pretty well.
Yeah, it does.
Under most circumstances, and it doesn't get, like, blocky, too blocky anyway. Um, so happy to print out anything else that would help you, if you wanna, you know, really draw all over these and try and mark it up.
Maybe, um, we could have something to replace the old map that's up there.
Each.
So let's take that one.
I mean, I've been in meetings in this room for the last twenty-five years, and I love that those have, have never changed. I think about it every time.
Color.
I can't be the one to change it. It's been a part of my life.
Who can be the one to change it?
I'll, I'll take it down right now.
Ryan's gonna change it.
Put it on top.
I don't know where they came from. I don't know what they do. I don't know who did it, but I just love that it's always better.
So can, once all the lines are drawn, can we get one of these with the spots actually drawn, each spot drawn in, so we can actually then look and see, okay, where does, where do these ADA potentially make sense? Is that something that we would have to, we could do here internally?
Let's get those up, so we can work on that.
Yeah, I mean, we can. These are, so this map is the one, I mean, you have them in your packet, but it's like the one that Jason said. I think, um, you know, it was a parking study in twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is one that I printed from the A and R atlas that just shows, you know, lot lines, basically. Uh, and then these are all those, um, the design plans.
From the state.
From the state's paving project.
Yeah.
So these are, you know, single segments of road.
So let's continue this discussion next month, 'cause we, sorry, Logan, we just ended up running really late.
Yeah, but I can, I mean, I can leave all those there and anybody can play with whatever they want.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll have you take that.
Next month's agenda, basically the same things back on here, but we have Chuck Weiss from Springfield coming and maybe Al also from West Windsor. And Ju, no, Julie and Chuck are definitely coming. Julie Preston from Chester.
Julie Hans.
Julie Hans.
Julie Hans is the town manager from Chester. Preston Bristow is the town planner from Chester, so I think you've kind of, like, portmanteaued their names.
I gave them right. Bristow, okay, thank you for clarifying that. I will look online to make sure I spell them right and stuff. And also, um, you gave them to me, Alicia.
Yeah.
All right, just very quickly, um, other business, I just wanted to mention, what's going on, the SDRs?
I will, just before you move on, if I can jump in. Uh, one thing that I've talked, I've talked about in a handful of meetings before. Um, one other potential source of grant funds that the planning commission should consider and should recommend to the select board. I'll try to recommend to the select board again, is Better Connections. Better Connections, uh, they just re-announced. Better Connections is a program that Martha knows more about, 'cause she just helped West Windsor walk through it. It's a process, it's a whole thing. But it does, uh, what they call master planning, where you really try to, like, design projects that you're going to get grant money for in a specific area. Ludlow has done, like, on a micro scale, a little bit of master planning, but it wasn't through the Better Connections program, so it didn't count. But when you go through Better Connections, then you are allowed to apply for these other grant programs, including the Downtown Transportation Fund. The Downtown Transportation Fund is how Chester and Springfield got their wayfinding signs, if you've driven through there recently. Uh, they're, you know, just signs that, like, tell you where things are. Um, that's how they funded those, was with Downtown Transportation Fund money. Uh, they've done other things with those funds. That would probably be a good source of funding for, for different parking projects, different levels of, like, if you wanted to do a street redesign and do head and parking, that's probably the, the type of funding that you would want. It's the better, you know, one of the better sources of funding, because you're only eligible for Downtown Transportation Fund money if you've gone through Better Connections. It's like not as competitive of a grant program, 'cause not every town has done it. Uh, Better Connections, they, it used to be a once every other year, they would pick three towns. They didn't get enough good applications this spring, and so they just reopened it up, like, just now. And they're taking two more town, they're gonna do two more towns this fall.
We can jump on there.
Um, so it's something for the town to consider. It's, I've heard in the past that it's only successful if you have somebody that is like a champion, that is willing to really take the lead and, and drive projects through.
They used to not allow you, if you had a current municipal planning grant, they wouldn't allow you to apply for it. I don't know if they've changed.
They've changed that part, as far as I know, 'cause they didn't, right now, they sort of just opened it back up and it's a free-for-all, 'cause, uh, they had it open this spring, the grant pro, grant applications were open this spring, and they didn't get good applications. They only accepted one town. And so they want more, so they decided it's gonna be an every-year thing again, and they're doing two, two towns a year, instead of three towns every other year. It's a bit of the weeds, but just something that you, you all should think about as a funding source.
Yeah, Cherry was telling you, it's a really good idea for us, too. Yep, okay. I just wanna, um, briefly say, for other business, um, yeah, what's happened with the STR is, we didn't talk about this at the select meeting, 'cause it was canceled, but, um, it was talked about at the village trustee meeting, and two people voted to send it forward. Keep going to the next, um, trustees meeting. Um, one person voted not to do that, but they're sending it forward to their next meeting in October. And, um, the food truck thing, that is tables indefinitely, because we had a whole lot of negative uh, comments from people, residents of town, too. A lot of them, they had, the Sunoco people presented a five-hundred-person signature petition that they got signed, but since then, our lawyer has weighed in, Chris Callahan, and he said food trucks definitely have to go through DRBs, and they have to be safe for police and ambulances and fire trucks to get in, and, and that they need to go through DRBs, which is why most of our area towns do that. But right now, that's kind of on hold, and, um, no one's doing anything about that right now. And the last thing was, oh, I.
Neighborhood development.
Neighborhood development, so I asked Jason about the neighborhood development, and we met with, um, these two guys from the state. And all of those different criteria, which we only had to pick, like, six of eight or whatever, basically the guys from the state said you have to pick all of them. And the select board was not on board with picking all of them, particularly the cul-de-sacs, and basically the guys from the state were real, Jason felt they were very picky. And we had to, we would have to change the whole application, but we'd also have to go through zoning, and that money is only available through December. Basically, everything has to be done before the end of November, but, um, and their decisions will be made and stuff, so we're fine. Jason and I both found that it's impossible to have, they're not even gonna okay the criteria that they want us to okay anyway, because they already said they wouldn't at the select board level. And plus, we'd have to have a public hearing, they'd have to have a public hearing for all that to work, so, but we can get at that through another way, through these, um, we can get at neighborhood development areas by going through regional. I can't explain it right now, because I gotta look at the email again, but there's another way for us to get there.
Through the FLU process.
Yeah.
Right.
The who?
The Future Land Use, FLU process. That's a statewide, that's part of the Act one eighty-one.
It's a little easier than going through the NDA process, so.
Can I ask just who the, the state people were?
I can look at my email.
Was it Jake and, and Chris?
I think so. Jason found, we found them to be very, they wanted every single criteria met.
Even though it says that that's not how it works.
Say that you have to.
No, it did not say that. It was Jason and Jeff.
Jason and Jeff?
Jason, no, wait, no, Jason is, Jeff and Jacob.
Jeff and Jacob. Well, I know Jacob. I don't know Jay.
He, there were several changes we would have to make to zoning.
What's the last thing?
Um.
Sorry, I, we don't. I just know all these people from before, and I'd, I'd reach out to them.
Well, the NDAs, are they gonna sunset them? Or I remember there was like a time period, it was like two years or something?
They're, like, the, the districts have existed for a long time, and they're going, going to continue to exist. The state, for a while, was pushing to, uh, so the tax credits applied to the downtown village designations, and the state, when I was in the, my pillar, I noticed that, like, the state was really pushing, that they wanted to expand the tax credits into the neighborhood development areas. They wanted to allow them to be eligible for the tax credits too. And so the legislature was really resistant to that. Um, you know, especially in the Senate. They really, they thought that if you were gonna do that, that you really needed to increase the money in tax credits. Tax credits are, you know, we think of it as like a revenue deduction, like, it's not, it's an expenditure, but it's not, um, you know, it's a complicated financial thing, but it's.
Yeah.
Like, we just didn't feel we had the room to expand the budget in that way. And so it kept, the legislature kept pulling it out, and eventually, they kind of ceded to the, to ACCD and allowed it to go through.
Yeah, but no, but clearly now, the tone is not to approve them.
We put the sunset on the lang, in the statue, 'cause the sunset is just how you force yourself to revisit the issue. Sunsets are often a rubber stamp. Sometimes you forget to extend them, and then you just extend them at the last minute. Um, I think people are more apt to extend a sunset than to actually allow it to sunset. And so even though you have a sunset in there, I, I would be.
But in the case of an Act two fifty exemption, which way would, obviously, it would lean one way versus the other, with that sunset decision, no? So why, so the point is, so why even do this? Why, is, if there's another alternative, if the NDA is, like, dead in the water, it was basically like a false promise.
Decision we made this week, for sure.
Let's just stop.
Jeff DUBA was one of the guys we met with, from the Vermont DHCD.
Yeah, I know DHCD pretty well. I know, I know Jacob, Jacob Hemrick.
Yeah, and who, and who could we give feedback to at the state for this?
I mean, I would argue, I would.
So who's making the decision to approve NDAs?
I mean, it's DHCD, it's ACCD. So I would probably, I would consider reaching out to Chris Cochran, 'cause he's like the head of DHCD. I think, I think he's still the.
But if you put in your, on your future land use map, if you have a village, and then you have a village area around your village, that's what's gonna be exempt.
That's what Jason said, yeah.
Yeah.
We think option two.
Through all this.
It doesn't open up those tax credits.
Well, right, so, yeah.
And the tax credits are, like, you know, I, I just, I point to, uh, DJ's a lot, 'cause I think that's kind of the success story with these tax credits, like, that was how they were able to do some of those renovations and, and do that space, was 'cause they got those good tax credits. And anybody in the village center is allowed those same tax credits. It's a process and it takes time, but there's money there. It's not as competitive as it could be, because not every town has village center, not every town has NDA. They've put more money in the tax credits for the NDAs, and then they've made it kind of hard to actually get your NDAs. The NDAs are really supposed to be, everything within a quarter mile of a village center designation should be a neighborhood development area. It's like, you have a village center, anything that's within a quarter mile of that is residential, it should be an NDA. That was what the legislature thought with this program, and so I think, you know, my, my feedback to you and, and to myself is, like, reach out to your legislators.
Yeah.
Um, you know, your legislator in Ludlow is not as experienced. He's on corrections and institutions, so he doesn't have the same pull. But, like, if you know a legislator that is on commerce and economic development in the House, or in the Senate, you have Allison Clarkson, you should reach out to Allison Clarkson, 'cause this is, she's on, on the Senate committee that over, oversees this program and oversees ACCD. She's the chair of the committee, so she'd be a really good person to talk to about, like, she probably know this program, she should know this program pretty well. And she should know this program, the ins and outs of it, and she, you know, I mean, that, that's the role of your legislators. That's, like, one of our favorite roles to play, 'cause it's actually something that we, like, can feel that we make a difference, but to put a little bit of pressure on the administration, to put a little pressure on DHCD and say, like, why are you giving them such a hard time? Why aren't you helping them through this process? That's what, that's the role your senators can play, and that's the role they want to.
Okay, I can, I'll reach out to her.
Yeah.
And the only, only last thing I wanted to say is, um, I went in and met with Cherry about getting electric car chargers for town employees, and, um, I guess, that happens through Green Mountain Power, and I have an email to Daisy Carlisle, who is the person, I guess, they use, and Brendan told me that they use in the town. Um, he just has to give me an estimate, and basically, we can get two car chargers here at, in the Ludlow lot, on the land that we actually, the town actually owns. That's the last thing I had.
Sweet.
I wanted to also have them at the community center, but they said that would mostly be people that are using the community center, not employees, and it's a specific grant for employees of the town, of the government.
What's the grant program?
Um, it's through Green Mountain Power for town employees, governmental agencies, nonprofits. Um, there's, they give priority to women's groups and minority groups, which we are neither, but, but they, they already said it's a done deal, as long as I get that estimate from a licensed electrician. Of what needs to, you know, how much he would charge to install them.
What is for the electric?
Um, I think, I think Green Mountain Power does, or Ludlow Electric. I'll find out all that stuff, Al.
When you're in a Ludlow electric zone, I'd be.
I was curious about that.
As the, a Ludlow electric commissioner, I would be pretty pissed if Green Mountain Power was selling power in my town.
And we also have to make a four percent match, but they said it would probably be around twenty-six thousand dollars per, and I said the level two chargers, because.
Twenty-six thousand or twenty-six hundred?
Twenty-six thousand dollars.
Each?
Yeah.
Both of them?
Yeah, they'll quote me, 'cause I don't have it exactly here. I have it in my email. No, the match is five percent of that.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's about the cost.
And just, and Brendan said he wouldn't approve it unless, he'd have to go through the legislature, but he wouldn't approve it unless he knew exactly what the match was.
Of course.
Yeah, of course.
Cherry, I'm sorry, you said four percent, then you just said five percent.
It's five percent.
Yeah, I caught that too.
I don't know what I'm talking about right now.
Five, six, seven.
A motion to adjourn. Brian, so moved. Ted, wanna get in there?
I'm good.
I mean, for a second?
Second.
Okay, we got Ted on the, we got Ted on the books.
Okay, Ted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are out of here.